So, you know, if we don't... I don't think we can come back in the future if we had a future concern necessarily. It's kind of like we're talking about it now, so I'll try to bring that up, run it to ground.
Questions? Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Curtis.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hi. So, just in comments, while this is an encumbrance on your land, it really doesn't affect anything because that's really steep. And the reason that the Highway Department asked us to maintain that future easement for a future that we don't know is that because it is tall and steep there. And so, when you do a highway and you go by that section or any other steep section of highway, or when the rocks roll down, you realize that it's a math equation. In order to slope a hill back, you need a lot of distance. And I think that this, that the proposal that we talked about on site that day, that makes sure that you have a place to build your house, a future barn on the flat space, makes total sense. The Highway Department could widen the road there and not need to have as much distance from the middle of the road. But we don't know what they need in the future. If you drive along Salmon Lake, rocks roll down all the time. That's too steep. But it's going to take a lot of, a lot of distance to slope the hill to the right. Proposal. So, I will be making a motion to abandon the portion between line 12 and 29, but not to reduce the right-of-way along the rest of the road. And I'd consider that a motion unless collapse on the bound.
I'll second that. I agree. It's very steep, almost vertical, in places around this. There's no way that that can be built on anyways. But it is, the road is between the creek and the mountain. And so, there certainly could be a need to alter the road into...
The Creek City.
...the future. The Creek hitting the road as we're, you know, experiencing in personally County now with the flooding. So, always wanting to maintain that ability to alter the road as necessary when it's not on billable property. So, I would second the motion.
Okay. Is there any additional public comment on this item? We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want this back?
So, just keep using that mic. Everybody, just...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nyde.
One follow-up request to the petitioners. If we could use your exhibit... Which one is it?
Exhibit.
Exhibit D. And just have you extend those lines 12 and 29 out to the existing right-of-way. That would be great. We could use that in, as an exhibit in the resolution.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is this working at all now?
Yeah.
It is? No? Okay. That was a shock.
It sounds like it up here. That's the funny thing.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Next? Next, I'd like to open up a public hearing on an update to our Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And since we do have a few items left on the agenda, we would certainly appreciate everyone if they could try to keep your comments to three minutes or less and try not to repeat folks who testified before you if it's the same comment you're trying to articulate. Our Director of Office of Emergency Management, Adrian Beck, you have a staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Stromeyer. We will make this quick and hopefully all the forces that are at play are not going to go against this here. So, today we have a, we have an opportunity to, the recommendation is to adopt an amended Community Wildfire Protection Plan update that was completed in 2018, February 2018. I don't know where this is going here. So, we began this update process in January 2017, but actually, we were just having a sidebar conversation in the audience here that it actually started quite a bit before that. But in earnest and officially, it started in January 2017, where we invited stakeholders from around the community, from all sorts of federal, state, local government entities, as well as wildfire districts, to begin the process of identifying what needed to be updated in our, in our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which had not been updated since its original adoption in 2005, other than an amendment to add the 2013 Sealy Swan Fire Plan. Can you hear me okay with this?
Good.
So, in the new update, and we've been talking about this for quite some time, essentially, we have new content, primarily a new risk assessment that helps us delineate not only our risk from wildfires, but also the hazard in a relative way to identify where we have a higher hazard and higher risk throughout our community. We have an action table that is a way to help us as a community keep this Community Wildfire Protection Plan actionable and hold us accountable to some of the recommendations that are within it. And we have an updated kind of wildfire history and community development, things that have happened since 2005. Certainly, we've had some significant fire seasons that were within that timeframe, as well as additional development and population growth. Probably the biggest change to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan in this update is the organization of the plan itself. It is designed to more closely align to the National Cohesive Strategy, so the plan itself is organized in such a way that we talk about resilient, restoring fire resilient landscapes, creating fire-adapted communities, and improving our response to, improving our response to wildfires and our ability to suppress fires where appropriate. So, as part of this update, we did go through a public process. We had great engagement from our stakeholders through what was a long 16-month period. We had several delays due to real events, namely the 2017 wildfire season that caused us to have to take a little bit of a break before resuming the process. And so, on March 8th, we had an open, we opened a public hearing to initiate a public comment period that we requested written comments from March 8th to April 12th. We did receive 11 comments during that time. And we also held a public open house on March 22nd here in this room, where we saw approximately 50 to 75 folks shuffle in and interact with key stakeholders and have an opportunity to ask questions about the update. So, following the public comment period, we did receive some comments that feel, we feel warrant some amendments. And I'll go through those here very quickly. So, I know this will be hard for some folks to see, but we'll talk about them a little bit. We received several comments with kind of an indication that they would like to see the Sealy Swan, the 2013 Sealy Swan Fire Plan more closely incorporated and recognized as part of this update. And so, the recommended, recommended action is to officially add it as an appendix. So, it would be now in Appendix D. So, that results in changes to the, to the table, as well as a list of appendices, relatively simple there. As well, there were numerous copy edits throughout the, throughout the plan that we felt warranted, warranted changing and resulted in just over a dozen small modifications, comma, copy edit type stuff. Another area that was, let's see. Apologize, the navigation bar is not showing up here. So, the other area that did receive some comment, actually not to our office, but with our, our partners at Rocky Mountain Research Station, Greg Dillon, who did the risk and, risk assessment for us, as well as the, the description of the vegetation and fire ecology. He had some recommended edits after having talked to some folks on the Lolo National Forest, specifically in their civil culture department. And so, he is working on those edits now, consistent with, consistent with the Fisher and Bradley fire ecology habitat types. And so, this is really just a change order to make it more consistent with, with current plans. It does not affect the risk assessment in any way, shape, or form. It's just a change to the description and how the fuel models are grouped together to make it a little more sense. There were some recommendations to add the, some data relative to the 2000 acquired, 2017 wildfire season, relative to some of the RH, relative humidity readings that we did see, as well as some wind speeds. So, that's a relatively easy change into the, into the draft that was not available when the original draft was let, but now is. The rest of them are relatively benign, as far as just minor tweaks to, to sentence structure. However, there is one that I'll call to your attention, that we did receive several comments on this one. In, in the area that is relative to a discussion on the topography of Missoula County, there's a narrative in there that describes the, just the general topography of Missoula County. And there were several comments that asked that the language regarding the steepness of slopes be less restrictive to how we talk about fuel mitigation tactics that can be used on steep slopes. And so, we have attempted to change that language in a way that we feel consistent with the comments and makes that a little bit more valid.
Questions? Okay. Thanks, Adrian. This is a public hearing. So, is there any public comment on the update to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan? Before we do that, Sarah? Oh, okay.
I'm a resident of Zula, in the Rattlesnake. The Montana Elders for a Liveable Tomorrow, which I remember, coincidentally came up with the idea this last year to try to hold some community presentations with the idea of preventing homes from being destroyed by wildfire. The focus was to be positive, and the focus was also to be from the home out, the forest in. And the, the plan has done quite a bit to address the mitigation efforts on private properties, which can vary from just a single house to somebody that has 200 acres. So, it's a complicated subject. But just as an update, we held basically four community meetings, featuring basically Jack Cohen as former fire scientist here in Missoula, and a very well-known person in the fire world. We started our presentations with a movie of unacceptable risks, which was put together by firefighters in Colorado after they had some big mega fires down there. And that sort of led into Jack's PowerPoint presentation that really shows how fires ignite. And the, the interesting thing in his presentation was all the pictures of these homes, some of them big, some of them small, just completely destroyed, down to the ashes. And right next to them would be standing living green trees, trees that you would thought would have burned. So, the, the whole notion of why fires burn was brought to the public through Jack and his, and his discussions, based on all the research that he'd done through the fire lab here in Missoula. And he's, he's a well-known expert. He's, he's been in the fires, big fires in California and elsewhere in Colorado, and as well as here. Our, our idea in this was to look at it from a homeowner's standpoint and see what, what could be done in a positive way, and a lot can be done, as Jack showed in his presentations. I personally, a couple of houses that we built in the Medow Valley of Washington State were burned up in the Carlton Complex Fire a few years ago. So, believe me, looking at these things after things fail is a sober, sober thing. And we don't want to see that happen in Missoula. As you all know, we live in a wonderful place, surrounded by forests. And boy, are we vulnerable in some of these areas. And I'm really glad this plan is, is going to stress the most vulnerable areas and what can be done about it. But it's a tall order. And we basically were partnering with the DNRC here in Missoula. They provided some funding for venues for our meetings. We held a big meeting at MOLI, which is the Olsho Lifelong Ownership Institute at the Also, Dave, you went to a meeting that we held in Red Creek, and it was on Bonner, and also one in Stevensville. And also, Jack presented to the city council. They were pretty impressed with what he had to say. So, I guess my biggest thing here is we've got to really work hard in keeping the...
Is your mic off, Harold?
It is in green.
I'll just speak louder, okay? If I stood over here with the work.
It's the light green on the mic.
You're at about three minutes, Harold.
Okay. I'm, all right. I won't say anymore.
Okay.
Keep, keep up the good work on the education.
Thanks. Thank you. Yep, come on up, Rich.
Thank you, Rob. Is this working?
I think so.
Talk really loud, he's got a camera.
Hello, is it working? No.
Testing, test.
It's green.
Okay. Well, just roll with it.
All right. I'm Rich Wayne. I'm the forester and wildfire for Willis Enterprises, the chipping, wood chipping plant out at Bonner, Montana. We utilize a lot of small diameter trees, crooked trees, dead trees. We can't use burned trees. And so, that's my professional interest, and my personal interest is forest health and wildlife habitat enhancement. And I think this plan goes a long ways towards protecting our community, as you mentioned, and reducing the cost of losing fires, hopefully the cost of firefighting. I provided, a couple different times, I provided written comments, and I'm glad to see you made the one change on that. And the, and the other one was the, the concern I have for grasslands wildfire. And as I started paying attention to this, the more I looked at all our grasslands and got thinking about the fire last October, maybe it was late August, up Ralston State Creek, and it was a grass fire. I don't know how to fight grass fires or protect from them, but it might be noticed, noted, and we might need a plan for that. In summary, my comments, and I'm not going to go through them all, but just establishing a baseline I felt was important, and I think the plan does that. What key metrics are we going to look at? What specific goals do we have? I think those need to be, we need to run this like a plan and implement, execute the plan well. I think that's important. I also would like you to consider adding another category called Wildlife Habitat Enhancement. I think some of the, the projects that resulted in any or fuels reduction will also increase habitat, elk habitat, probably muplima birds, and neotropical birds as well that they use that. And I think if we keep track of that, it's going to help us in terms of public interest in it and, you know, why, they're seeing a tree cut for a fire that may never occur. But if we have other benefits from that, I think it'd be shown as to be important. And that's really all I have. Nice job, really nice job on that. The county did a really good job on this plan. The execution piece will be fun.
Thanks, Rich.
Yep, you bet. Glad you're back.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just had a quick statement to read, so I'll be fast. So, my name is Jen Hensick, and I'm the District Ranger, Missoula Ranger District of the Lolo National Forest. And I personally want to say thank you to the Missoula County Board of Commissioners, as well as the staff for embarking on this revision journey. It's been an honor and a pleasure to be a stakeholder representative for the Ranger District in the Lolo throughout this process. And I really believe that the National Cohesive Strategy, as mentioned, charted the path for the nation, and your work embodies the direction provided. This past week, I had the opportunity to attend that International Fire Continuum Conference. And while it's a great opportunity to learn and grow as a manager and connect to the greatest minds in fire science, which, by the way, happen to live here as well, it was a great chance for me to see the efforts we're collectively working on in our corner of the, little tiny corner of the world. And it really represents some of the most successful practices they've been talking about this week at that conference. And not surprisingly, in many ways, we are leading the way for other communities. So, thank you. This CWPP illustrates that we are united, and the plan states it will help us guide prioritization of fuel treatments, bringing together diverse interests to tackle local wildfire challenges and opportunities, identification of potential resources for funding and mitigation activities, and the increase of our community awareness in important discussions around risk reduction for our residents and for emergency responders. I believe it goes without saying that the goals of the CWPP can't be accomplished by any one person or entity. And as we've worked together these last couple of years to identify and pursue pathways to success, I look forward to working with you all and our community as a whole to collectively address the future of wildland fire management in all of Missoula. And as we look forward to redeem our individual responsibilities for fire management across the lands we steward, I personally want to say thank you for your leadership and look forward to future discussions.
Does the mic help in at all?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Commissioners. I am Area Manager for the State of Montana Department of Natural Resources, Southwestern Land Office, Mike O'Hara. We are one of six land offices in the state, and we manage state trust land and conduct direct fire protection in all our parts of eight counties in western Montana. In Missoula County, we manage 100,000 acres of state trust land, and we conduct direct fire protection on 740,000 acres. As you well know, community fire preparedness and wildfire suppression are multi-agency and multi-jurisdiction endeavors. As noted in the CWPP update, DNRC is one of the many partner agencies in this part of the state that we refer to as the Southwest Zone. The agencies include 10 rural fire districts, five ranger districts of the Lolo National Forest, small pieces of ranger districts from the Flathead and Bitterroot Forests, four units of the Montana DNRC, a BLM field office, an interagency dispatch center, the Confederated Salish-Kootenay Tribes, and multiple offices of county, Missoula County Government. These are the partners that work together year-round to accomplish community preparedness and wildfire suppression in Missoula County. Together, we do our best to keep people safe, protect private and public property, and protect natural resources. As one of the partners, Missoula County is showing leadership in many ways, including for about four years now, you are sponsoring the Missoula County Type III Incident Management Team that is available in the Southwest Zone, and is currently getting a workout, helping with the county's response to floods. Missoula County is actively considering hosting the newly created Position of Cohesive Strategy Coordinator, funded by the partner agencies in the Southwest Zone. The primary focus of the position is to help us coordinate and focus our cohesive strategy efforts. This is in line with the county's unique role among the partnering agencies. The county can most directly address the impact development has on our collective ability to live with wildfire. The commissioners are being proactive about learning and getting engaged in projects out on the ground, such as your visits to the fire lab in the Marshall Woods Project. And lastly, the county is showing leadership by doing this update to the CWPP, an update which we at DNRC view as necessary and timely. In these and many other ways, the county is signaling proactive leadership, and we appreciate it. It's good for all the partners, including DNRC. A few comments about the CWPP update process specifically. One, you used an open collaborative process to update the plan, which again is a reflection on the strong partnership that exists in our part of the state. There were ample, ample opportunities for stakeholders like us to be engaged and involved. Two, we are glad to see Missoula County aligned with the three goals of the National Cohesive Strategy, to restore and maintain landscapes, to promote fire-adapted communities, and to implement a safe and effective wildfire response. At DNRC, we also align our efforts with those three goals. Three, smartly, you used the CPAW grant to bring in top talent to assist you with planning, analysis, and writing, namely Kamiko Barrett from Ed Waters Economics and her subconsultants, Molly Maury from Wildfire Planning International, and Kelly Johnston from Wildfire Professional Solutions. I read every page, and in my mind, the document is sound scientifically and excellent in terms of the readability and presentation graphics. Four, the action plan is clear and specific. It covers all the important pieces that can make a substantial difference in reducing the social, economic, environmental impacts of wildfire. We and your other partners pledge to work closely with you to implement actions identified where we have a role. I want to acknowledge a job well done by Adrian Beck and Pat O'Hara, and all the county staff who contributed. We work together on a regular basis with Missoula County, and we are proud to see our colleagues do such, such excellent work on your update. In closing, wildfire risk to communities will continue to increase as more people build homes in fire-prone landscapes like the forested areas in and around Missoula County. By planning for future growth, and through extensive public outreach, and continued interagency collaboration, we can work towards mitigating wildfire risks to communities. The actions outlined in the CWPP will serve as excellent, and excellent guide to our efforts as we attempt to accomplish these goals. We can anticipate and live alongside wildfires, rather than retroactively responding to fires as disasters. Recent research by Ed Waters Economics indicates that out of total wildfire costs, nearly 50% is borne by local communities. I'm certain this is something residents and business owners in Sealy Lake, Missoula, and many other Montana communities would affirm, especially after the 2017 fire season. These local costs are realized not only at the time of a large wildfire, but in the months and years following, and come in the form of long-term damages to watersheds, lost property values and tax revenues, and impacts to tourism and recreation. By being proactive and planning for these risks, as Missoula County is doing in the CWPP update, we can reduce the impacts and associated costs to local governments, residents, homeowners, and businesses. Thank you for being good partners, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. Thank you, Mike.
Hello. I'm Jen Hong from Rattlesnake. And I want to say how much I appreciated reading, especially pages 28 to 34, about firewizing and how homeowners can make their structures defensible with defensible space. My request is that somehow, using the information on pages 28 to 34, this document receives some real muscle in the form of funding and personnel that are intangibles that you couldn't write into a document for how a community applies these principles. We need a major campaign in Missoula to create a fire-adapted community, something like what Bend, Oregon has done through their toolkit. One of the things that happened on the 5th of May this year was that Garden City Compost received yard debris as part of a "fire-free day." And that small move could give us a measure of how much each year people clean the debris from their yards and around their, their property and bring it in. In Bend, Oregon, they're getting something like 26 million tons over a certain period of time. So, if we had a measurable system for seeing improvements in how, how we're doing as a community, but the big thing I'm requesting is that we put some real money and muscle into getting this information out. All that the city rural and, no, the rural fire department and city fire department has done to try to get people to do assessments around their homes is too little. What we did was too little. We need to create an atmosphere where making our homes fire-safe is the norm, and we influence the people around us to do the same. Thank you so much for this article, I mean, for your document, and especially for including so much of the firewizing.
Thanks, Jen.
I'm Jane Dornell. I'm a Deputy Regional Forester for the Northern Region of the Forest Service. And I really want to thank you and your staff for your commitment to this work. This is a revision to ongoing work, your leadership in convening partners, diverse interests. Your leadership in convening partners, diverse interests, and citizens to engage in this is significant. None of us can do this work alone. It's not easy. The implementation is critical to all of us. And you've served as such an inspirational convening group beyond this community and this country. We look at this work as an excellent example as we work with communities across the northern region, northern Idaho, North Dakota, parts of South Dakota. So, I just wanted to share that deep gratitude from the National Forest Service, working with our local leaders like Jen, with our state partners like the DNRC. And I also want to thank you as a citizen. I'm proud to have been a small part of this in that role as well as representing the agency. Thanks to everybody who was involved in this.
Thank you. Additional public comments? Last chance for public comment. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the commission?
Yes, Adrian, Rich Lane talked about a couple additional chapters, sections, something grass fires and wildfire habitat enhancement. Do you have any ideas for that? Is that something we can add to it later, or is it, you feel it's addressed somewhere else?
Thank you. As far as having like a, a range land kind of fire management component of the, of the CWPP, no, that does not currently exist, though I think that Mr. Lane's comments do bear probably some attention in a future update, is that we do have a significant amount of agricultural ground in Missoula County that currently is, is factored into the risk assessment that, that you see in the plan, but it probably does deserve a little bit more attention in, in a future update.
How about the wildfire habitat?
Wildlife. Yeah, as far as adding a section for, for wildlife habitat enhancements that are directly related to mitigation, is that an accurate summary? Um, I, I, I think that it is addressed, but again, it's an area that probably does bear additional consideration in, in a future update.
Well, I'll just say a big thank you to everyone who's been involved over the, over more than a year of this process of updating the CWPP. I've been involved in a number of the working group discussions, and I think we have a solid document here that we're contemplating adopting today. We live in a fire environment, and if there is ever a place in the northern hemisphere, northern Rockies, North America, that can think creatively about figuring out how to live with fire, it really ought to be Missoula, Montana, with the resources we have here, with the history we have here in natural resource management. We've heard a number of folks talk about implementation, and I could not agree more. I'm delighted that we will be bringing on an additional staff person to implement this plan and to address the cohesive strategy and how we might move that forward in Missoula County. People sometimes wonder what Missoula County does. Sometimes we seem to fly under the radar at times, but I'm glad that folks recognize that this is a clear role that we can play in coordinating fire and our response to fire and our response to coordinating agencies who respond to fire in Missoula County. So, I really can't say enough thank yous to everyone who has worked diligently on this, and I look forward to making sure that this plan does not just gather dust on the shelf, but actually does, is implemented and is a living document. Finally, I'll say I'm glad to see we have several representatives from our congressional delegation here because we absolutely look forward to collaborating with you all in making sure that we have the resources here in Missoula County to help implement this, this plan, which ultimately will benefit all residents.